Good morning, everybody, and thank you for coming out on this day. It's a -- this is an important moment for Montgomery County because we finally have the opportunity to address a longstanding need in the county which is to make our elections more responsive to the public in terms of campaign financing, to reduce the influence of interest groups in county elections, to expand voter participation, to expand the pool of candidates that can run for county office. I want to first identify and introduce all the folks that are standing here behind me. I'll start with Councilmember Elrich, who is a cosponsor of the bill; Council President Rice, also a cosponsor; Council Vice President Leventhal, also a cosponsor; Councilmember Reamer, also a cosponsor; and Councilmember Berliner, who could not be here today, is also cosponsoring the legislation. Let me introduce our representatives from various organizations that are supporting the measure. This is Kate Planco-Webride from Progressive Maryland; Carol Ann Barth from Montgomery County Civic Federation; Meredith Curtis from the Maryland ACLU; Jennifer Bevan-Dangle, who is the Executive Director of Common Cause of Maryland; and Ron Levin from the Montgomery County Chapter of the Sierra Club. And Lena Barnes of the Legal Women Voters may be joining us as well. I'm very pleased that we have such a strong and broad and diverse coalition supporting this effort to improve campaigns in Montgomery County, open them up to more people. This has been a long effort on the part of the Montgomery County Council to win this authority, going back to 2001. The county council has worked to achieve this authority from the General Assembly because we couldn't do it without that authority. And last year, the General Assembly, in their campaign finance bill that they passed, did include this provision allowing counties -- enabling counties in Maryland to set up a optional public financing system for county candidates. I want to thank those especially Common Cause Maryland and then Progressive Maryland who worked so hard to make sure that provision stayed in that bill that passed last year by the General Assembly, because that's what is enabling us to be here today to go forward with this measure. This measure is one that can revolutionize and transform elections in Montgomery County because it provides such strong incentives for small individual contributions. And those candidates who opt to participate in this system would have to limit themselves to individual contributions of $150 or less. In return, they would receive substantial public matches for those contributions and incentives that are stronger for the first 50 than the second 50 and the third 50. So, for example, a candidate who raises $50 from a registered county voter would get a match -- someone running for the county council would get a match of four to one. Someone who raised a second 50 from that same person -- candidate running who raises a second 50 from that same person, that would be matched three to one, and the third 50 would be matched two to one. So there's a strong incentive to keep finding new individual registered voters who are contributing to you, because that will be matched at a higher level than going back to someone who's already given you $50 or $100. This will provide that incentive that candidates have not had to do so. And Common Cause Maryland's going to talk about some of the patterns of giving over the years in the current system, but this will really transform the elections by resulting in a far larger percentage of contributions going and coming from small individual donors in the whole mix of elections in Montgomery County. This would be effective for the next cycle, for the 2015-2018 election cycle. It cannot be done for this election cycle, and so it does not change this election cycle, but it will be in place if the council adopts this for the next election for county council and county executive. Those are the offices that are covered. And also, in return for limiting those contributions to $150 then per individual, the match then can be up to $125,000 in public funds for someone running for a district seat on the county council, up to $250,000 in public funds for someone running for a at-large seat on the county council, and up to $750,000 for someone running for county executive. One has to qualify. One has to reach a threshold number of qualifying contributions to be able to be eligible for receiving public funds, and those are spelled out on the sheet that you have. But a person running for county council for a district seat has to raise 125 qualifying contributions of between $5 and $150 and a threshold of $10,000. A candidate running for county council at large has to raise at least 250 contributions of $5 to $150 and a total of $20,000 to qualify for matching public funds. And a candidate running for county executive has to raise at least 500 qualifying contributions of $5 to $150 and a total of at least $40,000 to qualify for public funds. That helps ensure that candidates have a significant amount of support who are going to be receiving public funds. And in return, for those public funds, they have to limit not only where they raise their funds to individuals $150, but they can't transfer money out, and they have to, of course, return any leftover campaign funds in the accounts after the election. That's a brief summary of the measure, and there'll be opportunities for any questions you may have after the speakers have spoken. I understand that one of my colleagues, Councilmember Reamer, has to leave in just a few minutes, so I'm going to ask him to speak next, and then I'm going to go to Common Cause Maryland and have them talk a little about the legislation. Councilmember Reamer.
Thank you, Phil. Well, I just wanted to express appreciation to Councilmember Andrews for bringing the legislation forward. I certainly agree that individuals should fund campaigns, and changes that we can make to empower individuals as the donors of political campaigns will only benefit our county government and, you know, the goals that we want our government to achieve. So, you know, I look forward to taking this up, and I want to again express appreciation to Mr. Andrews for bringing it forward. Apologize for having to run, but had a longstanding meeting I've rescheduled many times for 11:30. So, thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks for coming. I want to announce that Councilmember Navarro has indicated that she will also cosponsor the legislation, so we now have seven members of the county council who are sponsoring the bill. With that, I want to turn to Jennifer Bevan-Dangle, who is the Executive Director of Common Cause Maryland, which has done just great work on this legislation and on this effort and is working closely with Progressive Maryland and other organizations to advance clean campaigns in the state of Maryland. So, Jennifer, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I do want to thank Councilmember Andrews for the work he's put in. These programs are not simple, but they're essential. Unfortunately, we live in a time when the Supreme Court has basically ruled that money in politics will be unfettered. From the Citizens United decision that's blown open the door to third-party spending to the McCutcheon case, which is coming any day and could eliminate Maryland's aggregate limits on campaign donations, the power of the very few who have the money to flood elections continues to grow. Public funding is the only tool we have in our toolkit to fight back. Public funding doesn't decrease the amount of money in a race. Only the Supreme Court can help us tackle that problem. The public funding changes the focus of candidates. It empowers them to focus on their constituents, to focus on the $50 donors, because it leverages that $50 and turns it into something much more. It turns it into a major gift. So, public funding is the only way that we can make sure that citizens across our communities, citizens whose voices traditionally are not heard in the elected -- in election process, get a voice back in our campaigns. And they've been proven to open the door to minority candidates, to candidates from more diverse backgrounds who don't traditionally have access to the type of large donor networks that candidates rely on to run. Montgomery County is a leader. We could not be more happy to stand here with the county that has asked for this authority for so long and finally work with them to give them the bill that will help really improve the robust debate around our elections every four years here. And we're even more excited because we know others are watching. We know that Howard County is very interested. I've heard councilmembers from Anarundel County express interest. Once Montgomery County moves, we'll have a proven leader, we'll have a proven model, and we hope to turn this into a groundswell that will even reach back to the state legislature. So, we'll be available for any questions. Oh, I guess the other point is that it is working in other states. From Arizona to Maine to Connecticut, in Republican states and Democratic states, public funding programs are working. In Connecticut, in the 2012 elections, 77% of their successful candidates were publicly funded. You can be elected using these programs when they're crafted right. And it's had the results we thought. The robust deliberations around policies has changed in Connecticut. It's opened the doors to really hearing the people's voice in these policy decisions. And it's increased the minority representation. Once public funding got enacted, minority Latino representation in Connecticut's legislature increased 33%. 33%! So it really opens the door, and it really does help us path -- pave a better way forward. So we look forward to working with the council to pass a really strong bill that can be a model for others to follow.
Thanks. Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks for the great work that Common Cause is doing on this and has for a long time in Maryland, many other states as well, and nationally too. I'm going to ask Kate Planco-Webride of Progressive Maryland, who is the Executive Director of Progressive Maryland, to say a few words about the measure. Then I'm going to ask my colleagues if they'd like to make some comments, then I'll turn to our other organizational representatives as well. Kate?
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Well, Jennifer covered all of the most compelling points of public financing so very well. I'll just follow up with a little bit. This is a longtime priority issue for Progressive Maryland, mostly because it really does return power back to voters and away from the corporate special interests. We'll be out in neighborhoods five days a week talking to community members about this vital reform, hosting community meetings, talking to our members in the community on the phone, and we're going to put our all into making sure Montgomery County is the first jurisdiction in the state to pass this vital system. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate, and thanks for all the work you've done to help get this bill to where it is now and for the good work that Progressive Maryland's doing all over the state.
Thank you.
And I want to turn to my colleagues and see if they would like to make some comments. Whoever? Council President?
Well...
There you go.
Just very briefly, and I already talked a little bit about this at the press conference that I held before this, the president's press conference, but, look, what you've heard today is extremely important, and it's all true. You know, we need to do a better job of making sure we're separating the have-nots -- the haves from, you know, actually running our elections. And I think that it's very interesting, you know, I had a chance to go to the Supreme Court, and I was on the steps there talking about McCutcheon versus FEC, which a lot of people have not really paid attention to, but that's the next step in a long line of losses that our public has seen when it comes to really removing some of the challenges and stumbling blocks for a lot of young minorities from getting elected to office, and that is the separation of money and elected office. I stand here as a person who's been able to break through that, but at the same time, I think that it's really important for us to recognize this. There are a lot of questions that we'll still have to address regarding how this bill will be framed in terms of the funding aspect, and so I look forward to working with Councilmember Andrews on that. He and I have already spoken about that. But I think that this is a great bill that puts us in the right direction and really shows people that we are trying to do what we need to when it comes to making sure that we're encouraging public financing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President Rice. And Council President Rice says a delegate served on the Election Law Subcommittee in Annapolis, so he has a lot of familiarity with the challenges of enacting campaign finance laws that withstand court challenges, and we believe this one will. It's crafted very carefully with all those Supreme Court decisions in mind. Yes, and we're also working very closely with the State Board of Elections, which would most likely have the responsibility for administering this, and they're very interested in this as well because they anticipate that other counties may also follow this path. So, we're going to be working very closely with the State Board and already have had conversations with officials there. So, thank you, Council President Rice, for encouraging that. Council Vice President Leventhal?
Thank you. Well, Phil, you've worked on this issue for a long time, and I recollect supporting your effort to get the state legislature to do this in many, many years in the past, and now we have the opportunity to take advantage of it here in Montgomery County. I just want to make three quick points about this legislation. The first one is time management. There's only 24 hours in a day, there's only seven days in a week, and I'm here to tell you that every minute that I spend on the phone asking for money is a minute that I can't spend doing what I really want to do, which is studying the issues, responding to my constituents, meeting with communities, and understanding better the very complex issues that we face. It's an inordinate amount of time spent raising money. The second point is I'm very confident that I and other community leaders could compete very, very well under this voluntary system that my friend Phil Andrews is proposing here. There's no question that the ability to raise small contributions from several hundred donors in order to pass the threshold of legitimacy that you're a credible candidate with broad community support, as I've looked at this bill as I understand it, if I had raised about $80,000 from a range of contributors in amounts of $150 or less, I'd be done. And then public financing would make up the rest to get me past the quarter million mark that it costs to get elected countywide in this county. It's very, very expensive to reintroduce yourself to voters. It's several hundred thousand dollars. Right now, I've got to raise all that money on the phone from donors, doing fundraising events. I'd be done. I could spend this campaign shaking hands with voters, studying the issues. I wouldn't have to spend as much time as I do raising money. And then the third point I want to make, which I think is really important, it is necessary that citizens who believe in democracy and who love this county participate. That includes writing small checks. I think what we see now is that citizens figure that the campaigns are funded by big money, and they don't want to participate. I believe passage of this bill would actually make it easier for people to know that candidates are dependent on small contributions and that they're comfortable opening up their checkbook. If you believe in democracy, if you care about the people who represent you, write small checks, seriously. And this bill will create a framework where small checks, the power of small checks is substantially magnified, and so for individuals who like, "Well, what difference does it make if I write a $20 -- $25 check? That's not really going to make a difference." It would make a huge difference. It makes a big difference now, but it would make an even more significant effect if this bill becomes law, and I think it will really revitalize grassroots democracy in this county. So it's a really good idea, Phil. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. And Councilmember Elrich?
I'm enthusiastically supporting this bill, and I'm also probably evidence that you don't need $300,000 or $400,000 to win a large race. I mean, I won in 2006 with $65,000. I won four years ago with about $110,000. I don't raise money from big donors, particularly from the real estate industry, and what I relish about this is this will be the last election conducted under the old rules. And I talk to people all the time in the community who talk about Congress and talk about the effect of special interests to Congress. There is no special interest in the U.S. Congress that contributes 50% or more of people's campaigns, and that is true in Montgomery County. And to democratize the process here, to take the big money out of these elections, to really encourage people to fund locally, to get involved, to make their $50 count, to know that your $50 is going to count because you're not trying to offset $4,000 from an LLC, I think that's going to encourage people to participate. It's going to make us work harder to get those smaller donations. It takes a lot of small donations to replace a large check. I'm looking forward to doing that work. I enjoy doing it. I am really grateful that my colleagues, who all supported this when we didn't have the authority to do it, are still supporting it now that we have the authority to do it. I do think this will make a fundamental change in politics in Montgomery County. I wish it was this year, but I'm glad it's going to be in the next election.
Thank you, Councilmember Elrich. I'm now going to ask our representatives from the Civic Federation and Sierra Club and ACLU to make any remarks they'd like to make. I'll introduce Carol Ann Barth, who is president of Montgomery County Civic Federation. Carol?
Thank you, Phil. The Civic Federation represents about 150,000 residents in this county. Now, that sounds like it should be pretty powerful. That's a lot of people, a lot of civic associations. And yet, we often feel that the citizen voice gets drowned out by the big money. We often feel that it's very hard to get attention and time and research spent on the nuances of the issues before our elected officials because of the pressure of fundraising. I can also tell you that every day I worked with well-informed, passionate activists, people who care so deeply about this, their own communities and the county at large, people that are just tireless in working for a better Montgomery County, and yet not a one of them would ever have considered running because none of them have friends with deep pockets. And so I do think there is quite a potential here to have a real change-up and to see a range of candidates that we would not have seen before. So we supported the enabling legislation in the state, and we're delighted to be here today and to support the legislation in the county council, and we look forward to this process becoming the way that county elections now are done, at least in the next go-round. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol, and thank you for the longstanding interest and support of the Civic Federation on campaign finance reform. It is very, very central to, I think, what you do. Let me ask Meredith Curtis, who is representing the Maryland Chapter of the ACLU, to say a few words as well.
Hello. I'm here to say that the ACLU of Maryland is a very strong supporter of public financing. There are a lot of ways in which our elections could be stronger, and this is one of the most important ways. We're very proud and excited to stand with Councilmember Andrews and our allies and the other council members in support of this bill. It's very exciting that Montgomery County could set a new trend for responsible elections and increase democracy in Maryland. There are two main reasons that the ACLU finds this legislation to be really exciting. One is that it involves more voters in the electoral process, and it really strengthens their political speech. And so for us, it's a very important free speech issue that this is a -- has a lot to do with access. And it also rewards candidates for really engaging a broader base of voters when they are running for election. And that's very exciting as well because it strengthens our democracy. So, thanks very much for this opportunity to support, and we hope the Montgomery County sets the new trend. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you to the ACLU for joining in this effort. Really appreciate it. And I want to also introduce Ron Levin, representing the Montgomery County Chapter of the Sierra Club.
Thank you very much. Sierra Club is a national organization of 1.4 million members. We support, or Montgomery County supports, campaign finance legislation that prevents elected officials from becoming beholden to special interests. And we look forward to working with and helping get this legislation to become as good as it can be because we know how fundamentally vital it is to this county and for any other state or county that's looking for a way to improve the operation of its electoral systems. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge that Dana Byer is with us. Dana Byer is a candidate for the State Senate in District 18, and we hope all candidates running for office, wherever they may be, will support expanding public financing for state elections where currently it only exists for the governor's race. There are states, Connecticut is a good example, that has public financing for legislative elections, and it would be good to have them for delegate and senatorial elections in the state of Maryland as well. In terms of what you've heard, there have been really three themes. One is that public financing, a system of voluntary public financing, will reduce special interest influence in government. It will encourage more people to participate in elections, and it will encourage more candidates to be able to run for office who traditionally have not had access to big money in politics. So it will expand the field of candidates as well. And all that will result in more responsive government, which we all endeavor to achieve. So, that is what this bill will accomplish. I believe that it can be a model, not only for the state and the region, but for the nation, because it is unique in a couple respects. One, it provides extremely strong incentives to seek out new small individual contributors. It is, I think, the only measure of its kind that provides a larger match for the first $50 than the second $50, and so on. And that will propel candidates to seek out new contributors, more people to be involved in elections and campaigns. And second, because it is, it has such a limit of $150 from individuals as the sole source of contributions, if you choose to participate in this system, it does not have an overall spending limit or an overall expenditure limit because we want to encourage candidates to go out and find more small contributors. The public funding in the bill is really a bridge to being able to have sufficient funds to compete in an election, whichever election happens to be. First, you have to prove that you have significant support. The public funding then is match, is a matching system which can take you up to that level that you can be competitive without having, as Councilmember Leventhal said, to spend an inordinate amount of time fundraising, which no one should have to do, and it's not in the public interest that candidates do that. And it will allow more people to get into politics and run for office who are deterred now because of how one has to raise campaign funds and where the funds come from in many cases. And so, I want to just give you a sense of the schedule for the bill. We're going to be introducing the legislation formally tomorrow at the council. It will have a public hearing on Tuesday, March 4th, in the evening at 7:30 here, next door in the council hearing room. Then we'll go to a council committee for work sessions and then to the full body sometime after that. I would hope that we can get this passed in the next couple of months, I think that hopefully before we get deeply into the budget, which is our busiest time here. The details of this legislation are very important, and a lot of attention has been focused on the details of this bill to try to anticipate potential issues and address them. And I'm sure there'll be others that come up that we haven't thought about that we'll need to continue to address, and that's what the legislative process is all about. The public will have its opportunity to weigh in all throughout this, including at the public hearing, but not limited to that. So, I encourage anybody who has anything they want to contribute to this bill to, and any ideas they have to, let us know about them. We want to make it as good a bill, as strong a bill as possible. Thank you for coming. I think we'll open it up to see if there are any questions now from any of the media here.
So, Matt is not my strong suit, but it seems from the level of cosponsoring here that you have a senior majority of the council behind this bill. Assuming it's not that simple, so maybe some of the cosponsors can talk about what issues, and I understand about the level of expenses and concern that that, but what other issues are sort of, you know, sort of the bumps that have gotten over here a little bit?
Very good.
Yeah. Phil and I have spoken about the issue. Right now, the way the bill is structured, if you are fortunate enough and you have the means to contribute to your own campaign, the bill limits voluntarily individuals or their spouses to a $6,000 contribution. As drafted, the bill does not address loans, and we do see in this county there are a number of people of means who are lending themselves large amounts of money. And if, you know, they don't win, it's not likely they'll be able to pay themselves back, so that's the same thing as a contribution in my judgment, and it seems to me that if you're going to opt in and sort of level the playing field so that people of means who opt in don't have an advantage over people without means, then we ought to limit loans as well as contributions. I think there are other details. It's a complex bill that we're going to want to discuss, but overall, you know, this has been a framework that's been developed over quite some period of time, and as I say, I'm very comfortable myself that I and other candidates from a wide range of viewpoints would be able to compete very well under this set of rules, and having passed the threshold could devote more time to other important activities of public policy rather than just constantly raising more money because, you know, our challengers are able to raise money and able to self-fund.
Yeah. I appreciate Councilmember Leventhal raising the issue of loans because I think that is something that we need to address in the legislation, and it will not be a difficult one, I don't think, to address because it really goes to the same issue of if someone is participating in a public financing system, they are agreeing to abide by the conditions of that system. We already have the condition in there as to a limit on what an individual could give to their own campaign or their spouse could give, and I believe that we can add the loan provision to that as well to cover both, and I anticipate that will be something we do quite soon. Anybody else? Any other things? Okay. Anybody else?
So, where are you, you know, looking to fund this out of?
This is proposed to be funded by general revenues. We pay for elections through general tax revenues, and so this seems to be the most appropriate way to fund it. If anyone has a better idea, I'm all ears, but the advantage of funding it through general revenues is it is consistent with how we fund other costs of elections that the county is involved in or the state is involved in, and it can provide a certainty, more certainty perhaps than other funding sources might provide because one has to have, you have to attract people. perhaps than other funding sources might provide because you have to attract people into this system. Since it is voluntary, candidates are going to want to know that if they participate, that there will be these matching funds available because it's a big commitment to participate and to limit yourself to contributions of $150 from an individual. That is quite a change from current elections where many contributions are much larger than that. All right. Yes, follow up?
Well, it's a separate one, but because this is a voluntary, it will be a voluntary system, are the candidates who enter into it at a disadvantage to those who wouldn't because those people might still want to outspend and outraise you guys?
Well, Abraham Lincoln was once asked the question, "How long should a man's legs be?", and the answer he gave was, "Long enough to reach the ground." And that's why I describe this as a bridge to competitive elections and to opening up elections because one doesn't have to raise as much money as one's opponent to win an election, but one needs enough to get one's message out, and the limits that are proposed in this bill of, well, the amount of public funding that's proposed in this bill, $125,000 would be the maximum that a district council candidate could receive, $250,000 that an at-large council candidate could receive, and $750,000 that a county executive candidate could receive, in combination with the private funds that are necessary to raise that amount, which would be roughly a quarter of that amount, depending on the mix and whether the contributions are primarily 50s or whether they're primarily 150s that are driving the qualification. Those numbers combined should be sufficient for candidates to run competitive races and get their message out, and so it's much less material then about what someone else is spending. Someone else might spend more, they could spend more, but if the candidates in the system have enough to get their message out, they should be able to run very competitive campaigns.
And the threshold index for inflation.
That's correct.
So, you're not, we're not locking ourselves into a dollar amount that will become obsolete after four, eight, or 12 years.
That's right. Yes?
County executives, folks, have suggested that, you know, the timing of your proposal here makes this kind of an infomercial for your campaign and county executives, so you address that, and what would you say to that?
Well, I'd say a lot of people have worked on this issue for a long time. I actually used to be the executive director of Common Cause of Maryland from 1988 to 1994, so I'm really pleased that we have such great leadership with Common Cause Maryland. I'm not surprised, given the quality that we have. So, I've worked on this issue most of my life, and I know my colleagues have worked on these issues for a long time as well. We didn't have the authority to go forward until October. We just got this, this bill just passed in 2013. It took effect October 1st. It's taken a while to put it together and make sure that it's well-constructed and build support and do the organizing work that's necessary to have this kind of kickoff for this bill, to show that, you know, there's this amount of support for this legislation. So, that's the answer.
I want to jump into that on this point, Phil. To come to Phil's defense, I mean, the legislature finally acted in 2013, and Phil has made the judgment that he's running for other office, so this is his last year on the county council. It wouldn't have been possible for him to do it at any other time. This is the only time he could have done it.
And of course, this bill doesn't have any effect on this election. It affects the next elections. All right. Any other questions? Well, thank you all for coming. I'm sure we can stick around if you need to talk to any of us individually. Look forward to doing that, and thank you all for coming and look forward to passing this bill in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.